Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 6, 2018, and it is 7:00 PM. This is the regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in Laguna Niguel City Hall Council Chambers. City Clerk Gomez, can you please call roll?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Lindholm. Councilmember Davies.
Present.
Councilmember Minigar.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jennings.
Here.
And Mayor Genaway.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask John Pointer of the American Legion Post 281 to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Junior Girl Scout Troop 6478 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We ask you to look down on this meeting and help these elected officials to always seek the truth, make the right decisions that will be for the betterment of the city and its citizens, and ensure its continued greatness. We ask this in your name, amen.
Color Guard, advance. Would the Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Audience please join the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience may be seated.
Wait right there, we'll be right down. Fantastic. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Didn't they do a great job? They did. Okay, could we have the troop leaders join us? And let's give a round of applause to the troop leaders because we know that it takes that dedication to have these girls come this far. So, girls, if you could please tell us your first name, your grade, and the school that you go to.
My name is Zeta Patty Duran. I'm in 5th grade and I go to Moulton Elementary.
My name is Alyssa Vargas. I'm in 5th grade and I go to Moulton Elementary.
My name is Sophia Anthony. I'm in 5th grade and I go to Moulton Elementary.
My name is Tescus Aydis. I'm in 5th grade and I go to Moulton Elementary.
My name is Leonina Herrera. I'm in 5th grade and I go to La Madera Elementary.
Hi, my name is Steve Patty Duran, and I'm Zeta's dad.
Hi, I'm Nicole Anthony, and I'm Sophia Anthony's mom.
Being troop leaders and embodying the C-Country values of commitment to community and excellence in service. Now, before the meeting started, you girls told me about something that you're going to do that's pretty special. Who would like to tell everybody? Well, I know we're gonna start down here, though.
We are going to San Francisco for our bridging trip.
Tell us what a bridging trip is?
A bridging trip is where you're gonna travel to go somewhere to bridge to another level, like we're going to Cadet next year. So, we're gonna go to San Francisco and we're gonna use the money that we got from Cookie Money to travel there.
And how are Cookies doing?
They're good.
Well, congratulations, you'll soon be Cadets. Let's give them a hand, or Juniors.
Now, I think we have some parents that have cameras. Do we have any parents with cameras? Okay, so tonight, we'll be presenting plaques to the outgoing city commissioners and committee members, and we'd like to thank them for their service. Serving on a city commission or committee is a very important process, or very important part of our governmental process here because this is where the residents have input and they serve as an advisory body to the city council, and we value their time and their input. So, when I call your name, if you could please come forward to receive your plaque and if you would like to help me. First, we'll have John Kinney from the Investment Banking Audit Committee. Is John here tonight? No? Okay. How about Tony Dalendorfer from the Military Support Committee? Thank you, Tony, for your service. Thank you. We will do photo ops at the end when there's... Hey, Elena Feta Wen. Elena served for many years on our Military Support Committee, so thank you, Elena. Okay, Cassandra Andreas. She also served for many years on our Military Support Committee. Steve served for many years on our Planning Commissioner and is a past Chairman of that commission. Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Patty Barnett Muton, who served on our Senior Citizens Committee. And Patty continues to advocate for seniors and provide information to us, so thank you. This is exciting. Next, we have another member of the Senior Citizens Committee, Janice Rosenquist. The line's getting longer. This is what wedding receiving lines are like? And a member of our Sports Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Roberts. Thank you very much. Yes? It's hush money? No, it's not hush money. There were a few commissioners and committee members who were not able to join us tonight, but please, when you see them, thank them for their service. Susan Staub, who served on the Military Support Committee. Mike Churchill, he was a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. Stephen Alex, who served on the Sports Advisory Committee. And Aniko Sherry, the Traffic and Transportation Commission. So, thank you all very much for your service. We couldn't do it without you, and are there any more parents? Or spouses? Whoever wants to take a picture, I mean, I'll come in. Okay, well, thank you very much, and don't be a stranger to City Hall. We hope to see you applying for some more committees and commissions in the future, but thank you very much. That concludes our presentation, so we'll go back to the dais and move on to the next Okay, any person wishing to address the city council on any matter, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is required to complete a gold-colored Request to Speak Form, which is available on the counter near the door. Please submit the completed form to the city clerk prior to being heard by the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. So, City Clerk Gomez, I have three forms. Are there any additional?
No, Mayor, there are no other cards.
Okay. Okay, we have, first tonight is Melinda Galler from the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, city council members and staff, and welcome some gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm here today, I'm Melinda Galler, and I am a new day half-chair for the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to present the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce City Manager and Chief of Police Services Welcome Reception, where you can get to know the new city of Laguna Niguel leaders. So, that's Christine Ridge, City Manager, and Lieutenant Matt McDaniel, Chief of Police Services. It's gonna be Thursday, March 22nd, 5:30 to 7 at El Niguel Country Club. Thirty-five dollars, general admission. There's gonna be a carving station, mashed potato bar, and grilled veggies. No host bar, prepaid RSVPs due by 3:16, so hope to see you all there.
Okay, thank you, Melinda, and I encourage the community to RSVP to the chamber and make reservations because you certainly do want to meet our new city manager and our Chief of Police Services. It'll be a fun evening and well worth your time. Okay, next is Laura Horgan.
Good evening, everyone. I've brought you flowers to thank you for your service. Thank you very much. As I said, thank you for your service. I've been living in Laguna Niguel for about 20 years, and recently, my electric bills went up 300 percent because I got put on time-of-use billing, and because San Diego Gas and Electric has a monopoly, I have no choice but to pay whatever they want to ask, and we actually do pay some of the highest rates in the country. But you all have the power to change that, and that's why I'm here tonight to invite you to UC Irvine. We have a half-day program coming up, and we'll have every expert that you would ever want to talk to about community choice energy, which allows the city of Laguna Niguel to decide where they want to get their energy. And we can choose any sources we want. A lot of cities are already doing it, and they've enjoyed huge savings, but I know, being the excellent representatives that you are, you would never make such a decision without knowing all the facts. Here are all the facts coming to you, and you can meet, like I said, every expert who can answer all your questions, and so I just ask that you consider coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing us the information and the flowers as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and next is Barbara Correa.
Hello, good evening. So, I'm a Laguna Niguel resident, and I live in Point Niguel, which is the, I think, probably the largest department complex in the city. It's located, stretches from Pacific Island to Niguel Road on Highlands, and I just wanted to kind of make you aware of some of the practices that are going on there. That's managed by a very large company called Sarah's Regis Group, located in Irvine, but they are, one thing that's going on there is they are charging, taking money out of people's deposits for wear and tear maintenance, which is illegal under California state law, and they're actually charging tenants beyond, above and beyond that amount of their security deposit for things. Also, they are raising rents several hundred dollars at once, and that's perfectly legal. There's no rent control here, so they can do that, but I just kind of wanted to, and I don't know if there's anything that you can do, but as a resident, I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on, if there's any way to look into it, and to, they're a very large company, you know, to talk to them about this. There are people living there who, you know, have not been able to buy into the home market, and like I have, my two daughters are gonna be going to Dana Hills next year, and we're kind of stuck, and I'm very, very worried about, you know, my rent going up $300 at once. It's gonna be presented a really huge problem for somebody like me, and also, this deposit situation is really predatory practice, so I just ask that you might consider looking into it. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Correa. Okay, next is Lenka Coloma.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lenka Coloma, and I came here last week to police services because my husband found a suicidal note by a local baseball field, and I spoke to my two children, I have two teenagers myself, and I think we have quite a situation on our hands. I have very close and deep relationship with my both children, and they both suffered severe anxiety and depression, and they are reporting to me through our close relationship that most of the children at our schools are suffering with depression and anxiety. And, you know, finding this suicidal note just last week really brought it home, and so I've been going to local schools, but, you know, they have counselors on campus, but, you know, they, you know, the schools are trying, but I think we have to really pull together as community because it's not just school issue or school, you know, thing to resolve. We have a serious problem on our hands. Our children are literally crying for help, and I know it as a matter of two, what I went through and how we dealt with it without drugging, because that's usually what happens, right? The children have problems, so we send them to the doctors, and they just give them pills, and the problem just gets worse and worse. Then we have suicides, you know, we have shootings at schools, right? I was just today at one of the local schools, and the teachers are, there is tension, there is anxiety just among the teachers and everyone. So, I'm coming here today as kind of one of my stops because I am reaching out to the community. I am giving lectures of what's actually happening in the human brain. I studied biology. I studied extensively neuroscience and quantum physics, and through my very unique method, I was able to help not only my own children, myself, because I suffered with anxiety and depression myself as, you know, growing up, but I think we have to really consider this very seriously because I don't want us to end up just with issue, you know, like Parkland, Florida did, right, and then just looking for some answers for some new law to be passed around. This is a problem we are facing as a community. So, I'm basically coming here to see if there is any option, we can start pulling people together, start having open discussions, suggesting some, you know, solutions, what we can do, but our children need help. And if you go around and you ask the children, "How is life?", you know, they will tell you it's okay because stress is something they are so used to and anxiety. Yeah, so thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming tonight. This is an issue that many of us are working on, and I know I'll be addressing it later in council comments, some of the things that we're doing, but we appreciate your coming here. We are working with our police services, we're working with our school district, and also outreach to the community. So, we do have your contact information, so we can discuss that later. It is not an agenda item tonight, but I will discuss some of it during my council comments, and I do know that at Alyssa Niguel High School tonight, they're having a program for parents on this very issue. Okay, any more Request to Speak? Okay, so that concludes Public Communications, and now we will move on to the Consent Calendar. So, we have items 1 through 13. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussion? Okay, I would like to pull item 9. Councilmember Minigar?
For me, 9 and 10.
Councilmember Davies?
Yeah.
Lindholm?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're pulling items number 9 and 10. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Davies, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Jennings. All in favor of approving the balance of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, on to item number 9, and item number 9 is the application to OCTA for Project V funding, and the reason I had it pulled is this is something that there's been a lot of talk in our community and a lot of anticipation regarding the trolleys, they see them in other cities. So, I'd like Director Abazadeh just to provide our community with some information and tell our committee what this is all about and where we are in this process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. About a year ago, the city conducted a feasibility study to see if there was any support for local transit. Through a number of workshops that were conducted at the city hall and the senior center, we learned that there's a huge interest on the part of the city's residents for local transit. The way the initial proposal was put together, the circulator would start at MetroLink Station, come down Crown Valley to the Civic Center, and then along Alicia, it would go up to different business centers. That was one version of it. There's another version that would cover a greater area. Once the resolution that's before you this evening is approved, we're putting together an application package to OCTA to secure grants. The first year will be for planning purposes, where we would finalize the route for the trolley, establish the trolley program, and from second year on, the trolley would operate. So, the first year will be planning to finalize the route, as I mentioned. This would be a five-year program for the city once we get the funds, and we're seeking your support for the city's application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Minigar?
My question is with regard to the allocation of $550,000 from Orange County Transportation Authority with regard to the Project V. I do recall that vividly when Moore and Associates came here, it was March of last year, that he was going through two distinct options. he was going through two distinct options, and we were chiming in depending upon, you know, which routing or rerouting would be the most suitable for, for our residents. So having said that, based on what you just said, that $550,000, which is 10% OCTA's requirement of matching funding, that would be just for planning and finalization of the routing? If I understand you correctly, that would be connected ultimately to the cities of Dana Point and Laguna Beach?
Yes, you're correct. However, the $550,000 per year, the first year, we probably will not seek the entire $550,000. I haven't put the numbers together. We're probably looking at $100,000, $200,000 for planning purposes. From second year on, it would be maximum of $550,000 to operate the trolley system.
So having said that, the typical protocol with any engineering project, as you really, as you know very well, when it goes to OCTA, we're going to be doing the PSNE packaging, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, so the first year, we're going to be, we're going to be asking the consultant to prepare the final routings.
Correct.
Then it's going to come to us for the approval.
Correct.
Then you're going to take it back to the subject consultant, or you're going to re-advertise for PSNE package?
As you mentioned, we will hire a consultant to help us put the routing plan together, put the operations plan together. We'll also have a marketing plan with that. Once we've established those, we'll, once the city council has granted approval, at that point, we'll be able to advertise and hire a service provider to run the trolley system for us.
All right, and my colleague can maybe chime in. Some elected officials from the city of Mission Viejo have talked to me about that for potentially, potentially connecting it to the Mission Viejo Mall. That remains to be discussed among us when it comes back, because it's going to be a tough one to see how, you know, we are going to be reacting to that. We, as a city, obviously, we are independent, but OCTA funding is typically, even though it has local utilization and local use, but at the end of the day, they want to make sure that they intertie all these, you know, small networks. San Clemente has its own, but they are, they've connected that. When I checked with the city of Dana Point, that is connected to them, as you know, Dana Point is connected to Laguna Beach. By no means I'm advocating for the connection to the Mission Viejo Mall. It all depends on supply and demand. It's market-driven. You said you're going to do a marketing assessment to see how people would be reacting to that potential connection, if any.
Yes, we will. Obviously, we will develop the details later on. However, I just want to remind everyone that Mission Viejo currently does run their system into the MetroLink Station. And if our starting point is MetroLink Station, that's a good interface between the two systems.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to move item number nine.
Wait, are there any more comments or questions on this item? Councilmember Davies?
I just want to make a comment. I'm on the Transit Committee for OCTA, and like we're talking about, is, our trolley would basically start at MetroLink, so that's where the connection with Mission Viejo would be. And also, as Director was saying, through this money, not only will we contract the drivers, but we will also lease the vehicles, because OCTA doesn't give us the vehicles. So we'd be doing the leasing, and then that's where the money would go. But it's, it's definitely, you know, something that we'd look into, but I, I think the connectivity would be fantastic to be able to go from Mission Viejo, you know, Laguna Niguel, Laguna Beach, Dana Point, and obviously, something you'll discuss, but I think when it's up and ready, and we're going to do this, we'd probably want to start in the beginning of summer, where most of the kids are going to be using it, taking it to the beach, and really get the promoting out there, so that we've got a summer to really get participants moving. So when it hits into the fall, we'll have participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Minigar and Davies. My question on this is, while Mission Viejo is our neighboring city, we are, we've lost some of our restaurants and some of, form of our productivity. I would like to see us go to our Ocean Ranch Center and see if we're getting our people to within our city boundaries. So if you could consider that in the study, it's, I'm not so excited to have people bus into Mission Viejo, because Ocean Ranch has got some very exciting things going on.
Yeah, no, and we do need to consider our, our own city's economic health, and a large part of that is the sales tax, which we have seen decline. So we want that to stay within our city and actually bring people from other cities into ours. Any other comments or questions on the item?
I actually have one more. I just want to touch base, because I do believe, when it came to the bus, that we actually either eliminated or cut that route that goes to the mall, didn't we, down Crown Valley that was going to saddleback? So this would be also maybe one reason why those that were using this, you know, and like I said, I completely believe in keeping all our sales in here, but we did cut down the route, so people that were taking the bus to Mission Viejo to shop because they didn't have cars, they don't have that available there. So that might be just something in the back end to keep in mind. Thank you.
Yes, the, actually, the OCTA eliminated the line, yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I believe Councilman Minigar moved the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lindholm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, item number 10. This was for the slurry seal project, and that was pulled by Councilman Minigar.
Just two quick questions. The first one is, in reference to slurry sealing, you know, the segment of Alicia Parkway between Pacific Park all the way to Federal Building Entrance is one of the worst segments in the city. And I strongly suggest that, I know when we're going to be discussing budget allocations during the CIP programming, that for our city, we should, somehow, we should advance that. So we take care of that segment when we welcome people coming to our city. That would be the first segment that they see with, you know, those potholes, you know, not far from Walmart, not far from, you know, the big shopping center. So that we prioritize that segment along all these projects. And the second question is, or request, is that it would be good somehow that we know about, you mentioned that as a part of approval of this, who did the PSNE, that kind of thing. So we have some background information, so we know when, we don't come here blindly to say, "Okay, it's approved", and then at the end of the day, there is potential, you know, issues left with that.
Okay, with respect to Alicia Parkway, actually, that project isn't designed currently, and we expect to advertise that particular project in the next three months. So what we'll do, actually, we'll go out there and grind and overlay to, to get rid of the ugly spots on Alicia Parkway. So we'll take care of that way. This particular project was put together by city staff. We did not use a consultant, so it was done by city staff.
Very good, thank you. I make a motion to move if there are...
I just had one comment.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I wanted to note for the, for the discussion that this also includes the, our Dog Pooch Park on Crown Valley Parkway. We've had a fair amount of discussions in the Parks and Rec Committee about doing repairs and maintenance upgrades and otherwise complete overhauls of that. I was sensitive about adding slurry coating onto a parking lot that we could do deep provisions to. I'm not sure necessarily that that would be the, the case, and I'm not necessarily sure that it's going to be next year. So I think in the, having been out there, and I did go drive it, I get the point, I see why it's needed. So if we were redoing asphalt, I'd have a different opinion, but since we're just slurry coating, I think it's good, and it's a good interim fix, and I don't think that we're wasting any money on future revisions. So it seems to me that the parking lot may remain the parking lot based upon the configuration anyway, so.
Yeah.
Just wanted, wanted to note that.
Yeah, I did have that same concern, and also because there's kind of like a domino effect with all the projects that need to be done within the Pooch Park, and whether or not one should be done before another. But this is something, the slurry seal, the cost of that is pretty minimal, and it will be, at least the residents can enjoy the benefit of that while we're waiting to do the other things. So is there a motion to approve this?
I'm in motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Minigar, seconded by Mayor Protem Jennings. All in favor of approving item number 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, so that is it for the consent calendar. Now we are into finance. So our business item this evening is finance item number one, and it is the fiscal year 2017 to 18 mid-year budget review. Finance Director Erlinson, can you please provide us with a staff report?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Staff has completed its mid-year review of the 2017-18 budget performance, revenue and expenditure trends, and capital improvement project status. The mid-year revised forecast projects that fiscal year 17-18 revenues are to be up substantially in the general fund, as most major revenue sources in the general fund are expected to exceed original estimates, due to primarily a healthy housing market and building activity in the Gateway Project area. Actual expenditures for existing personnel, operating professional services, capital outlet items, and capital improvement projects in all funds are projected to meet or be below the adopted fiscal year 17-18 adopted city budget. So this evening, I will be addressing the city's budget philosophy and assumptions, some adopted budget highlights, significant revenue and/or resource items as a result of our mid-year budget analysis. We do have some proposed operating expenditure changes that I will go over with you. We also have some proposed capital improvement program expenditure changes as well, but it's all good news. I'm not asking for any additional money from reserves, I just want to put that out there upfront. We'll be going over some capital improvement programs that are currently underway, and I'll be addressing some items for your consideration when we get to our budget workshop, which I'm anticipating to be around May of 2018. And ultimately, what staff's recommendation is tonight, based upon everything that I'm going to be talking about going forward. So first and foremost, the city's budget philosophy and assumptions. The city has always, and that includes the city council, has always prided itself on ensuring that revenues and expenditures are balanced on a current basis. That is still true. Our CIP emphasis, or capital improvement project emphasis for fiscal year 17-18, is on streets and parks. And we still maintain a half-million-dollar general fund contingency reserve, but we've never had to dip into that since I've been here, and I've been here six years. So some adopted budget highlights. So I believe it was June 6th of 2017, the city council adopted the fiscal year 17-18 budget. So I'd like to address some primary sources of revenue, or our major sources of revenue with you. Our primary source of revenue is property tax revenue. And the city council and staff believed that property tax revenue, so that's all sources, unsecured, secured, and a few other property tax revenue sources, would total 14.7 million almost. Sales tax revenue was estimated to be 12.1 million, and property tax in lieu of VLF, which is actually closely tied to our property tax revenue, was estimated to be almost 5.9 million. So these general fund primary sources that I've read off account for almost 53% of our funding sources. So we have three revenue sources that pretty much we live by. What we do pride ourselves in, and always have, is our capital improvement budget. And we are spending this year 15.1 million dollars on streets, roads, and Crown Valley Master plan improvements, that would include the community building, but also playground improvements, grind and overlay projects. But having had to dip into reserves of about 7 million, which we did at adopted budget, that was known from the beginning, so I want to put that out there upfront, and that was for the Crown Valley Park plan. And we built up, built up that reserve over the course of many years. So some significant revenue and resource items. As I mentioned, property tax revenue is our main source of revenue. It accounts for approximately about one-third of our revenue stream. We're projecting that based upon estimates, and revenues received to date to be up about a half-million dollars. Sales tax revenue is down about $253,000. That's not really due to point-of-sale transactions, it really is a result of county pool allocations from online sales. But point-of-sales up through information that I have to date, and I'm meeting with our third-party provider tomorrow morning, actually, POS sales are actually kind of flat. Property tax in lieu of VLF is up 160. Again, that coincides with our property tax revenue, so increases in assessed valuation, and then supplemental taxes on top of that. Community development fees are up about 1.3 million. That's primarily due to Gateway Area Traffic Impact Fees related to the concern group for the bridge widening project. And we all also are receiving an M2 Environmental Cleanup Program Tier One Grant from the Orange County Transportation Authority, or OCTA, in the amount of $165,000 and change for a catchphrase and improvements project, which I will talk about in more detail a little later on. So general fund-wise, we estimated that general fund revenues back in June of 2017 would be about $43.6 million. Given all revenue sources, reoccurring revenues and one-time revenues, we're estimating our projected revenues as of June 30 would be about $45.2 million. So about one and a half million dollars more than we had projected. On the expenditure side, again, just general fund, we had estimated that our expenditures would be about 38.4 million, close to that. And based upon all of our estimates and analysis, our revised number is about 38.6 million. So again, we're about a million and a half to the good. So we do have some proposed operating expenditure changes. And the first one is related to the police services function. Most of the Orange County Sheriff's Contract is paid through general fund money, which is primarily funded through property tax revenue, sales tax revenue. So general revenues, not charges for services. We do get what's called a COPS grant, where we get third-party funding from the federal government. Our estimate in, in June of 2017 was actually $24,000 less than what we're actually receiving. So as such, what we're recommending tonight is that we reduce the use of $24,000 of general fund revenue and increase the appropriation by the same amount, using the third-party funding that we're going to receive from the federal government. In our community development department, building and safety function, building and safety services, we're asking for an additional appropriation of a quarter-million dollars to the, as a result of the monies that we're going to receive from primarily the concern group. Since we do contract out for building services with trials... building services with Charles Abbott, they do charge us based upon the dollars that come in. So the dollars that I was referencing earlier in community development, they do charge us a fee for that on average, about fifty-four percent. That appropriation, based upon the calculation, would be about a quarter million on a million three of additional revenue. Again, in community development, our community development block grant function, or CDBG, we're requesting a net deappropriation of roughly seven thousand dollars based upon a reduction in grant planning and administration. There is a slight increase in our appropriations to our public service organizations that we support. But the, what I would like to say, and I'll address this later when we get to our CIP portion of this presentation, is that this net deappropriation will be used to fund CIP programs in our CDBG project areas. In public works, in our parks maintenance function, personnel expenditures, we're actually requesting a or an additional appropriation of approximately fifty-three thousand dollars from our Sea Country Senior Community Center function to our public works parks maintenance function to properly classify a maintenance worker position. The maintenance worker will still work and provide services at Sea Country Community Center, but the funding and the reporting relationship will now be completely under the Public Works Department and not the Parks and Recreation Department. So it's just moving the funding, but the job tasks are and will remain the same. So we have some proposed capital improvement program expenditure changes. The first one is a new project, which we're calling the Catch Base and Improvements Project. And we're at, the city is asking for an appropriation of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and change to recognize anticipated receipt of the OCTA M-two environmental cleanup program tier-one grant funding that I had mentioned earlier. So this project will replace, and there's a picture up here on, on the screen. We're going to replace a good portion, if not all of our catch base and screens, and OCTA is going to fund a substantial portion of that project. So all we're asking the city council to do tonight is to recognize the grant funding and appropriate that grant funding towards this project. We have our fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen annual street paving program. And where staff is asking for an appropriation of almost nineteen thousand dollars, which results from the community development block grant, or CDBG again. And that is the six thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollar deappropriation from operating expenses that we would like to reprogram into CIP program plus additional funding that we now have realized in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars. We would like to reprogram all of that into our CDB, CDBG program area to repave streets and roads in our CDBG project areas. So current capital improvement projects that are underway, Crown Valley Park tier-three improvements, that would be the community building. There's a conceptual picture on the right side of the screen, the upper picture. That is starting at this point. Design has already been underway. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen arterial paving program, that will be underway as well. Most of our work does happen in late spring, early summer. And also our residential paving program. So not only do we work on arterials, but we also work on residential streets as well. We do both. So there are some items for future consideration that I would like to bring to your attention. The first of which is the Orange County Sheriff's Contract. So we have received our first cost estimate from the Sheriff's Department for our fiscal year eighteen nineteen police services contract. This first iteration results in a seven and a half percent increase in our contract year-over-year, which would be approximately little over a million dollars. But to put that into perspective, the city also did add some positions during fiscal year seventeen eighteen. But I would like to point out that historically, the first estimate is always higher than the final contract cost. So staff is expecting this initial estimate to be a lot less or slightly less than what I, what we're saying today, and we will report back to you at our budget workshop. In which again is anticipated in May of two thousand eighteen. In addition, the California Public Employees Retirement Program, otherwise known as CALPERS, we are going to have rate increases, the employer rate, that the city pays on behalf of its employees. These rate increases, which there is a table up here, and I'll show you dollar amounts for historical averages, current costs and projected costs on the next slide. But the rates for this fiscal year and next fiscal year, on average, are going to increase by about four, I'll say four tenths of one percent. And that really is due to CALPERS' decision to lower the discount rate from seven and a half percent to seven percent. So as a result of lowering the discount rate, it did have an impact on all agencies that participate in CALPERS. We have to make up that cost, so to speak. So in terms of dollars, and I know it seems counterintuitive because I told you that the employer rate is going to increase, but if you look at the actual cost to the city from two thousand thirteen fourteen to this fiscal year and our projections for next fiscal year, you actually see that they're decreasing. And the reason being that as employees, longtime employees, because we've had very low turnover as they retire, new employees that come in are not eligible for the retirement system that long-term employees were given. That's why you see this substantial decrease. And that is because of prior city councils. They were forward-thinking before the Pepper Law went into effect to reduce the pension benefit. And as you can see now, as long-term employees leave, retire, that it is actually saving the city money. But nevertheless, with CALPERS changing the discount rate, we're going to have a slight increase from fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Our projection is about four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars roughly. Our estimates for two thousand eighteen nineteen are about four hundred and fourteen thousand and change, just slightly over. But a far cry from what we were paying in two thousand thirteen fourteen. So with that, staff would request that the city council adopt a resolution modifying the fiscal year seventeen eighteen city budget, revenue estimates, and appropriations as provided. I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Erlinson. I have some questions. I'll start and then we'll go down this way. On the community development fees, you said there's an increase of one point two nine five million. And there is an increased expense associated with that, and you, the number I believe you said was two hundred and fifty thousand. Are there any other additional expenses related with the impact of that development? Any expenses that we would not have had that development not been going in the gateway, such as widening the street? And, and how much of that one point two nine five does that account for?
So the fees received, and or I, I, what I'll say is the revenues that we're recognizing this evening, the majority of that is from a certain developer that I mentioned earlier, the person group. Not all of it is, though. We do, we have seen an increase in other activity, permanent activity. In terms of expenditures related to these fees that we are receiving, then we do contract with a third-party to process these fees. And the city, and we're under contract with them, the that is a structure that's based upon revenues that are received every month. So the average, ultimately, the average fee that we are charged by Charles Abbott is about fifty-four percent. So above and beyond that, the fees that we are recognizing would be appropriated towards CIP projects. So the concern group is paying us a fee for a bridge widening. We are appropriating those fees for that purpose. So I, I, I hope I'm answering your, your question. They're not repeating fees, if I may say. These are one-time revenues.
Right, I know they're one-time revenue, but you said to widen a bridge. How much is that going to cost? Because, I mean, it looks like we're actually making a profit of over a million dollars. So I want, where, where is that money going? I know we're not making the profit.
No, no.
So where is that money going?
We're not making a profit.
I know we're not, but so where is it?
So actually, these fees were anticipated to be recognized last year. And the actual revenues came in this fiscal year. So is a timing difference. These fees have already been appropriated towards the Crown Valley Widening Phase Three project, which is the bridge widening project. So these revenues are going to widen Crown Valley Parkway. I guess it would be going, is it either westbound or northbound? I still get confused nowadays. But pretty much from the Five Freeway in Nassar, please correct me if I'm wrong, pretty much from the Five Freeway all the way to Forbes Road at this point, that's what those fees are for.
It's actually the Cabot. It's, it's eastbound or southbound, depending on your, your direction.
Okay, well, thank you.
So basically, all these, the developer fees have gone to pay for that widening.
That's correct.
And we have already appropriated those expenses in our CIP.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay.
You're correct.
And that's a one-time revenue until we see other development come down in the gateway, and then we will see this again.
That's correct.
Okay. Questions for my colleagues. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note, and we had some discussions in Sacramento about this, the we had a decrease in our sales tax pool revenues. I have heard, and it seems to be difficult to explain exactly why, has something to do with Nexus and how they're allocated. I can tell you from a state level, the state's fairly frustrated with that as well. And some of our colleagues were in those meetings, and they were talking about the need to change that, and apparently there's grand disparity between even neighboring cities with relatively similar incomes and, and things. So I, I, I don't like to see our, our numbers go down like that, but I, I do want to note that this is something, hopefully, that people are taking a look at. And to the extent this happens year-over-year, which I don't think is likely to be the case, but it could be, that we find solutions to do that. Also, as part of our Economic Development Committee, we are very mindful of sales tax. And we've been talking about those in our public sessions about how we can generate those and what we can do. What we're concerned about is is internet sales and things like that affecting that. So if you were one of our online, even if we have a retail presence in town, if you buy from their online option, you, you may or may not be generating sales revenue here. So one of the ideas was try to focus that on the recipient rather than the distribution. If you did that, if you targeted everybody where they were receiving the goods rather than where they purchased the goods, then you would find that we, our sales tax revenue would be going up greatly. And so we're, we're looking at that and trying to plan around that from businesses and things that we're trying to develop here in town. I think it will probably go without saying, but I'm going to go ahead and make sure I asked the city manager today during our contract review, our agenda review, that any contracts that require, are required to be revised as a result of these changes in the mid-year budget, I, I just ask that those be done immediately and they be brought back to us immediately. I don't want to get into situations where we encountered in the past where that, for any reason, dragged on. So I think that there's, I'm not even sure that there are any, but I, to the extent that there are, I'd like to have them back as soon as we can, so.
Thank you. Councilman Minigar.
Steve, I noticed that I, I do concur with all your numbers, assessments, and appraisal of the mid-year budget. There's one area with regard to gas tax revenue funds. This is the issue. Yesterday morning, we had a meeting, all of us, my colleagues, with the state comptroller. She was explaining about, you know, the ramification of SB one in conjunction with all other measures and all other revenue sources. You're saying that the revenue is going to stay flat. Now, this is my argument. I was under the impression that under SB one, at a minimum, this year, it is going to be in effect until June. We have to wait and see what happens to the outcome of Prop sixty-nine. If the voter is gonna, you know, it, it all depends on the repeal, you know, in this election year. If it's going to be repealed, which nobody knows now what's going to happen, if it gets repealed, regardless, we're gonna get revenues for this year. So, and I was under the impression that when we submitted that application, correct me if I'm wrong, one point one eight million dollars worth of projects that we sent to CTC California Transportation Commission for their approval. Now, where do you have that embedded here? Did you include that in your assessments that we're going to be getting that kind of revenue?
So first, if we're talking strictly about gas tax revenue.
SB one.
SB one, which is part of, yes. So the SB one monies are part of gas tax revenues. We account for them in our gas tax fund. I compared our original adopted budget revenue numbers with the recent estimates from California City Finance, Michael Coleman, who actually estimates, helps us estimate these numbers and is usually spot-on. The delta between what we adopted in June of two thousand seventeen and the recent estimates, which were as of January of two thousand eighteen, there was only about a fifty-one hundred dollar difference to the bad. I couldn't see adjusting gas tax revenues, and that's, includes SB one, including the loan repayment. Okay, and then all, you know, the different sections that we receive related to gas tax. I couldn't see adjusting gas tax revenues for five thousand dollars. Okay, in fact, I, just my own personal observation, I've seen actually gas prices kind of increase. A five thousand dollar swing either way is not worth adjusting for. A $5,000 swing either way is not worth adjusting for, in my opinion, uh, right, wrong or indifferent. But nevertheless, based upon actual revenues, we're actually tracking very well. So to answer your question, SB one, uh, funds are accounted for in these revenue estimates. We've already received actually some SB one funds already from the state.
Roughly how much?
Uh, we've received, uh, right now about $300,000 in SB one funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Lindholm.
Thank you. I'm gonna follow back up on that, uh, gas tax because the gas tax has gone up and our residents are paying the gas tax. I, I find that very discouraging that if we're not getting the money back to our residents for our streets and infrastructure. Uh, so I'm understanding that we have an application in our, how does that work that we are paying, our residents are paying additional taxes? That money should come back to us so we can use it for our roads and infrastructure. Are you saying that was only $5,000 that increase? Is that what you were saying?
Actually, we would, based upon current estimates, we would real- realize a $5,000 decrease, Councilmember Lindholm. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, the way the gas tax works, there are different sections to the gas tax. And there are different formulas for each of these sections. They're based upon population. So we receive funds based upon current population rates, which come from the State Department of Finance. I mean, I could, and then there's.
So you're saying that our residents are paying more in gas tax and we are actually getting less revenue back. Is that correct?
In, in some cases, that is correct. Theoretically, I, I would say, yes, that's correct. Based upon, if you're, based upon certain sections of the gas tax.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question on that? I, I thought I just heard you say that, that, that they estimated that we would have $300,000, which is baked into our tax.
That's, that's SB one funding.
That's what I'm talking about. There's SB one funding baked into the number and the, our current estimates are just about $5,000 off of that higher estimate. So the number is in our budget. It's just they missed the estimate by about $5,000. And he's not saying, he's saying that it's not worth making a, a budgetary adjustment mid-year for $5,000. But we still have the $300,000 in, which then goes into infrastructure.
Okay. I feel better if I'm paying additional taxes that we, our residents are getting the funds.
Believe me, I'm with you, so.
I wanted to clarify that when you were saying we're getting a decrease in that. So why, uh, actually is our sales tax down almost a quarter of a million dollars?
Well, based upon the, uh, data that we have at this point, uh, from our third-party sales tax consultant, HDL or Henderleider Delamas, uh, and I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow to, uh, get our third quarter results, which are really our Christmas results. Year-to-date, our point of sales, so actual fiscal transactions, we're actually on par with prior year. So it's not that any, that, that our citizens are not, or people coming from outside the city even, are not buying goods within the city of Laguna Niguel. It really has to do with the county pool, which is basically, uh, online transactions. And the way that sales tax is distributed to the various cities based upon these online transactions. And, and that goes back to Nexus. And there's been kind of a struggle for a few years now as to how all of that, all of those, uh, online transactions and the sales tax related to those transactions should be distributed to the various cities statewide, not just Orange County.
Is this a trend that will continue? Is this dip of a quarter million dollars, uh, this year? Or will it continue each year going forward because of the appropriations by this Nexus?
So is it a continuing trend, uh, based upon, uh, the data for our point-of-sale transactions? I would say no. Uh, what does happen is similar to, to any agency, any, any fund. It's audited. And when it's audited, you know, there may or may not be adjustments. And that's pretty much what happened in this case. Uh, there was a one-time adjustment and, uh, to the county pool and impacting us directly, but it impacted quite, actually quite a few cities in Orange County. As a result, it's not just us. It, uh, this adjustment to the county pool resulted pretty much across the board countywide, uh, about a 2% decrease in sales tax revenues to our, our municipalities on average.
Okay. I, I just, I would ask you if, if we have become a donor city, but I will let you delve into that.
Can I just add something to that? Some of the meetings that we went to in Sacramento, I mean, this was a topic, uh, that all cities are very interested in because it's a phenomenon that's being seen across the board. And a lot of it is the internet sales and not being credited back to the city level. So this is something that I think, uh, we will see hopefully a change, not the near term, because it's gonna take a while to work through the policy and the mechanics of it, but longer term. But, you know, my understanding is the county pool has decreased, so we get a portion of that. And if they can credit sales tax to the county, let's go one step further and credit it to the city. But, uh, that is something that all the cities, or at least those that are of us that consider ourselves to be donor cities are really looking at. But I think that has a little bit longer-term solution.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that information, uh, because if this is an ongoing trend, in four years, you're talking about a million dollar decrease. So it is something that needs to be watched. So I, I appreciate, uh, my fellow councilmembers' effort on this.
Well, another point, it also has to be not, right now, it's, it's voluntary. The use taxes on internet sales are voluntary reports, which is a system which is very fraught with problems. So if you buy something online and they don't charge you for sales tax, but you live here, you have to report it yourself and pay it. The compliance on that is minuscule. Uh, so the, the system is effectively broken. Uh, some charge, uh, sales taxes and some don't. Uh, but we have to come up with some other system. And I'm glad to see at least the, I don't know if they're doing anything about it, but they were certainly talking about fixing that and hopefully have a destination tax rather than a, a, a starting tax or a, a shipping tax, which is really what we have now. So if you happen to be in a tax-free zone or something and it ships from out of state, uh, we would, that tax would be charged here. I, I don't know how, um, I don't know how the, the merchants would keep up with it. I mean, if you had a global thing, you'd have to be charging local sales tax, but there's got to be something other than a voluntary report. And that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah. And that's a considerable, um, considerable hit to us. So, um, anytime I think of parks and roads and resurfacing, um, so, I look at the funding. A couple more questions. When you're moving, uh, $250,000 for building and safety for Charles Abbott, is that a moving, a transfer from one fund to another, or is that for additional services?
No, that, that is actually for, uh, additional services, uh, related to additional revenues that we are receiving.
And what will that be? What, what are those services?
Well, those serve, uh, so our, our contract with Charles Abbott for, uh, building and safety services permit processing is, uh, kind of a tiered structure on a monthly basis. It resets at the beginning of every month. And, uh, based upon the, the revenue, revenues that they're processing, determines that the, the fee that the city is paying. And the more revenue that we take in that they process, actually the lower our, the rate that we're charged. So as such, uh, on about $750,000 of additional revenue in this case, the additional appropriation to process, uh, that revenue through our contract to Charles Abbott would be about a quarter of a million dollars. So the net, I guess, the, the net increase to, uh, city revenues would be about a half a million dollars based upon the, the current contract we have to outsource our, uh, building and planning permit.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And then my last thing is to look at, um, as we go forward from January one, that our current contracts are not, um, on an overrun, that all our contracts are, uh, within the contract amount or within a 5% override. Uh, are all our contracts as of January one, uh, within that?
As of January one, uh, I can say that all of our contracts, uh, to my knowledge are within, uh, or I, I, I'll say city expenditures are within the approved contract limits. Yes.
All right. No, thank you. Thank you on that. And, and I'm seeing your, your city manager wishes to speak.
Councilmember Lindholm, I would like to add to that. So, um, since this issue has been brought up before, one of the changes that we are making is for our public works contracts, where you typically, those are the large dollar contracts where there are sometimes a lot of unknowns, whether it's a measurement issue or maybe there's something under the ground that wasn't anticipated. When we bring those forward for your approval, we are gonna be seeking an approval on the actual contract amount, but then also for a contingency fee, and it may range anywhere from 5 to 10%. That's not an amount that's automatically gonna be paid to the contractor. That's amount in case we do encounter things that we don't want to slow the job down, that we will be able to approve and ensure that the total amount expended on any public works contract is within the legally authorized amount.
I think that's absolutely excellent. Uh, in fact, when we were building, uh, going back when we were building the city hall, we found out there was a huge water pipe under city hall. Uh, unanticipated, it was about 48 inches or, or it was huge. And that cost an additional $1 million to move, uh, because you wouldn't want to have that pipe break under city hall. So there are unexpected things that you find as, as you go forward. Uh, those are my questions. Thank you.
Hopefully we don't come across any more million-dollar pipes. Councilmember Davies.
Thank you. A lot of the questions have been answered, but I just wanted to quickly touch base as well as the sales tax. Yes, we are becoming a donor city. Um, you, your cities throughout Orange County that have a lot of manufacturers, they're the ones that are benefiting from this. You know, all you have to do is drive by and see Amazon boxes on everybody's, you know, porch. And that's where the money's going and it's not coming, it's not coming back to us. It's going there. So, uh, until they can get some legislation, this is where we're gonna continue to see. And, and they are working on it, um, both regionally, um, as well as state, uh, because they know this is a concern. It's a concern even with OCTA, you know, they get a percentage there as well. And that's money that they're putting towards, uh, infrastructure and that. So, uh, it, it affects everybody. And then I, I just a quick question. Uh, obviously we're talking about, um, we're talking about contracts. Our software, where are we with that being implemented? Cause I feel like time has moved by pretty fast, that it should be up and moving. And we were talking about if so, it's time for something that needs to be renewed, um, it automatically comes back. How are we doing on that?
Actually, we're doing very well. We're ahead of schedule, as a matter of fact. My staff and I, uh, have actually advanced, uh, the process. We've been in training, including, uh, other city departments. Debbie Bell and her staff have been performing training. Uh, we've, uh, reconfigured, uh, what's called our chart of accounts. I, at this point, I would think, if I had to estimate, uh, we're about one, one month ahead of schedule.
Which means when will we be completed and when will it be up and running? 100%?
100%?
Yep.
Assuming when you say up and running and, but I would also say staff knows how to use the software.
Correct.
So that's a caveat. Uh, I would guess at this point, probably around July, between July and August at this point.
And that's what we had estimated, so it's good to hear.
Yeah. I, well, and I had, I had actually thought maybe closer to, uh, end of August. But I'm thinking, I'm hoping to get the software online, uh, by the beginning of our fiscal year, which would be July one. That's what I'm pushing for. But it is a lot of work.
And then one, one other, um, question regards to the, um, Charles Abbott and percentage. You had said that the, the contract is 40, is it, they get up to 54%? And then you said it works in tiers. Where, where, where does it, how low does it go? And you said the more that comes in, the less they get.
So I, uh, actually the, the Charles Abbott contract for, uh, building and safety services is a, a, a tiered contract. So I believe, and Leslie, I don't know if you want to address that, but I think it's, uh, the first $60,000, if I'm not mistaken, is.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't know the numbers right off, off the bat. But the way that it works is the first X amount of money that comes in, meaning plan check and permit fees, uh, Charles Abbott gets a corresponding X amount. And then there's another tier and then another tier after that. So when the plan check and the permit fees came in for PRCN, uh, that was a huge amount of money. And so they got a, a bigger chunk, a pretty sizable chunk. And that was per the contract. And, um, generally speaking, I'd say month to month, it, it hovers around 60, 70, 80,000 dollars a month. But when that came in, it was, it was significantly more. Um, then the other part of the fees were the transportation fees, the impact fees. So that was separate and it was not Charles Abbott, but it was a separate fee. And that goes into, into the infrastructures.
Could you send us those numbers so that we have those?
I'd be happy to.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Any more questions? Items for discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Okay. We need to read the title. Of Resolution of the City Council, the City of Laguna Niguel, California, Modifying the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Budget Revenue Estimates and Appropriations. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay. Now on to other business and council reports. Okay. And we will start with the, um, CDBG Grants Ad-Hoc Committee. Mayor Protem, would you like to report on that?
Uh, sure. Do you have the numbers on it or I, I don't have the numbers? I just want to let everyone know that we, we did have our, uh, our planning meeting. That was the second of, uh, two of those meetings. Uh, we went through, uh, all the interviews. Uh, we had a robust set this year. Uh, I think that's planned to come back for our next meeting. Is that right?
I believe it's the next meeting. Director Roseberry?
April meeting.
Come back to us in April. And it's just amazing to see the good works that are done by, um, the service organizations in our community that really help those in need.
If we, if we could wave a magic wand, we would give them many, many dollars because they do fantastic work. And, uh, it, it's one of the, uh, the most bittersweet things I think you can do on city council is that, uh, we, we're so blessed to have their services, but, uh, we're constrained by the dollars that we are allocated to give out. But, uh, I know they greatly appreciate it. We made some adjustments to improve efficiencies and things this year. So, uh, based upon what I saw, I'd be proud to, uh, make the recommendations when it comes back in April.
Okay. Yeah. No, it's, uh, it's good work that they're doing. And I'm glad they're part of our community. Uh, now we have the Ad-Hoc Economic Development Committee. Would you like to give that report as well?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Uh, we have been, uh, meeting monthly in the Ad-Hoc Development Committee. Uh, and these are publicly noticed meetings that, uh, that the publics have invited to. We haven't had their participation yet, but they are invited. The idea is, uh, to try to set up something, uh, new that, uh, focuses on ways that we can increase revenues to the city to replace businesses that have left with, uh, thriving businesses that, uh, that put money back in our books, but also provide services to the community, which are extraordinarily important and that we need. We're trying to be very long-term strategic about this, not necessarily thinking about just filling out the, uh, the stores that we have open right now, but really looking at our city in a much more comprehensive way and finding areas that, uh, could be targeted as, uh, certain types of, uh, economic development. The mayor and the city manager will be going to a, uh, what's that acronym?
ICSC.
ICSC. I still don't know what that stands for, but, uh, it is the collection of, it is a collection of businesses and things that we can go and pitch. And, uh, we are trying to create a concierge-level service that, uh, is different, uh, that is befitting of our status as a city. Uh, and from what I heard, I was very impressed with, and I, I think that would be a nice presentation. They're talking about, uh, you, unique cards that, uh, that will be presented out, and, uh, and that's really at all levels of, uh, the city. So, uh, especially in the planning department, uh, we want to create a concierge level, uh, of service that when somebody comes in, they get assigned a person that deals with their thing, and we're trying to identify red tape or otherwise impediments to businesses coming in and removing that as part of this process, so that, um, when you compare us to our cities, we still remain the best place to do business in Orange County, and I'm certain that we can improve on that. So, uh, that's, that's the point. So, uh, yeah, we've had almost every facet of the city involved in these meetings so far, and they, they're very, very helpful, and I'm looking forward to some more solid report outs as we get it back in. Sure.
And on that concierge level, uh, service package, a lot of those functions we are already doing, but we're putting it together as a package, and we're also reaching out to the business community to asking them for their input on that, because they've used those services. And, um, we are looking at long-term, but we're also looking at some more immediate needs because we do have, we realize that there are some vacancies, and some of the questions we hear around town are like, where are the restaurants? So we are looking at that as well, and that's also another reason why, uh, city manager Ridge and I are going to ICSC to look at those businesses and to let them know what a wonderful place Laguna Niguel is to do business. So, um.
Question, I think, from.
May I, I, I must commend both of you. Uh, commend, uh, commend Mayor Chenway and, um, Mayor Pro Tem, John Mark Jennings for just taking the lead on this. Uh, question for you. Can we get a streamlined business, I mean, restaurant permitting process? I know we, we talked, our, our, our planning department does almost everything. They just haven't, um, marketed it. Can, can we get that one particular segment? I, I mean, we have to have a long-term plan, um, as you say.
And that's what we're looking at, the concierge level package, of putting that all together. What are all the pieces? And what is our business community telling us?
When, when can, can we roll out a streamline for our, our restaurant permitting process? I, I know it's a huge thing that we have to do, but is it possible to roll it out?
Um, I, I would hope by the end of, let's see this.
April.
April, yeah, end of April, because we're into first quarter pretty soon, so.
Well, and we, we have discussed, and, uh, I think it's important, our neighboring cities are on the cusp of development. Uh, Dana Point certainly is. Laguna Hills has been talking about it, and they've been stalled for other reasons, uh, which presents us with an opportunity to step into that void, to do something quick and meaningful in a very high level of service way. And, uh, and hopefully through, uh, our efforts attract some, some, some good things for our residents. So we're trying to be very mindful of the timing of this and move quickly. So I, I share your concerns on that.
So maybe sometime in April, we'll, we'll see, uh, something out there and.
Yeah.
Because I was talking to some people from like San Clemente and San Juan, and they're going, their permitting process takes forever. No comments from them on that way, but, uh, just to get the news out there. That's great.
And, and I'm, I'm always very mindful that we don't want people's buying or shopping or dining habits to start while they're waiting for us. We need to be out there before they get in the habit of going to a certain restaurant in another city.
Well, I think that we could have, I mean, my hope was to have that in place before they went to the conference.
That was what I was just gonna say.
Is to pitch the very businesses that would benefit from that streamlined process.
So the conference is in May.
May, so.
Great. That was gonna be my comment. I'm hoping we have this ready to go, so that's gonna be part of our pitch when you go over there. So when they do come, it's already implemented and it's ready to roll.
Well, it's something for us to talk about, too.
It's part of the marketing.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, if I may add to that, um, we do have a lot of moving parts on it, and we are looking at all different ways to attract and retain businesses. And ICSC stands for the International Council of Shopping Centers.
Thank you.
From Mayor Pro Tem.
I am acronym poor, I think so.
We certainly will. By April, I would love to bring a discussion item forward to you to let you know about all of the moving parts and everything that we're doing, and to specifically address your question, Councilmember Lindham. One of the things that we're looking at, which I know is of interest to you, is, is there a way that we can limit the amount of studies or the amount of hoops that a restaurant has to go through when they come to town and they go into an existing pad, and we are working on that. So I'm excited to share all the information with you for the actual venture that the mayor and I are taking in May. We are going to have some teaser materials, um, so that we will be handing out to the retailers that we think would be the best for our community, um, to try to entice them and to teach them on the reasons of why they should locate their business in Laguna Niguel.
I think that's absolutely fantastic. Let's get it going. And I also wanted to compliment and thank, uh, Councilmember Davies because she was, uh, very helpful in asking some questions that we were trying to move this forward and get some great restaurants into our city. So thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding economic development? Hey, now on to council reports. Who would like to start? Which end should I look? Councilman Minigar.
It's gonna be a long one, but that's okay.
No.
All right.
Can we start then over here?
Okay, see, you just forfeited. Councilmember Lindham, turn off your mic.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it very fast. Uh, I, I just, I think, thank you, uh, Steve Erleksen for a very great finance report. Uh, thank our council members for traveling to Sacramento. I appreciate that. We attended an economic convention, uh, down in, um, to hear about local businesses, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Okay, wait a minute. Councilman Minigar, did you hear that?
That was an example.
Great example. Thank you.
She just set a precedence right there.
Councilmember Davies.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna let you guys fill in regards to the trip, but it was a very informative trip to Sacramento. Um, what I did do is talk to, um, Heather Streppman, who was the CEO, in regards to us having a follow-up recap in regards to all the different bills that are out there, um, and, you know, where we want to go from there. Do we want to pose? Do we want to suggest, um, modifications? Do we want to support? Um, so that we can move forward on, you know, all the time that we spent. I also, um, attended the Niguel Ranch stakeholders, um, parking, uh, meeting, and again, I want to thank both, um, uh, Director Mazabadi and, so there I went, Rick, I just killed you right there, Nazar, it's Zeon and Nazar. It was really actually a very good meeting. We got down to three options that we're going to bring in front of the traffic and transportation. And again, this is the, the main, uh, Niguel Ranch road and also the other roads in there. But, um, you know, it's, we got to a point where, what, three options, they'll go there, they'll make a decision, and then it'll come to us. But I think as we, we, that's gonna be our final meeting, I think, and we've, we've gotten as far as we possibly can. But I think it was great that you guys have definitely taken the time. We've listened to the community, we've listened to the concerns. Sajer Saunders was also in there, too, so they know that we care, and, and I really appreciate all, all the help. I also attended the League of Cities Board meeting, and we pretty much went over a lot of legislation. And, um, obviously, kind of with ACCO C pensions, number one, but safety is actually one of our, uh, number one plans. And I just want to put this out there that there is a, um, a measure out there that, um, they're trying to get votes. Uh, it's, um, safe communities, and I just want to talk a little bit about this. We all are well aware of what Prop forty-seven, Prop fifty-seven, AB one oh nine did in regards to early release of our prisoners, as well as taking felons, making them misdemeanors, uh, which I truly believe that's where our crime rate has gone up, as well as our homeless, uh, and even the drug epidemics, epidemic. So what I want to just educate you on is right now, they're out there taking signatures because they want to be able to get this on the ballot. Uh, and so it's up to you if you want to do something like this. But just some information, uh, the proposed measure backed by a group that includes Assemblyman Jim Cooper, uh, uh, Oxgrove, and Sacramento County District Attorney, uh, could appear on the November, uh, two thousand and eighteen ballot. This would add fifteen new offenses to the list of violent crimes, including human trafficking of a child, rape of an unconscious person, and assaulting a police officer. Californians convicted of those crimes will no longer be eligible for early release under last year's Proposition Fifty-seven. And if you can believe that, these things were considered, um, misdemeanors, uh, and they kind of slipped through the cracks. Uh, will reinstate DNA collections for offenders convicted of seven drugs, seven drugs and petty theft charges that were reduced from felonies to misdemeanors under two thousand and fourteen Proposition Forty-seven. Uh, create a felon for serial theft when someone is caught for the third time stealing more than two hundred and fifty dollars worth of goods. Uh, because right now, it's nine hundred and fifty, and it's just each incident. It's not nine hundred and fifty in a day. You could go ahead and get up to nine forty-nine at Walmart. If you get caught, you get slapped with a, a ticket, you move on over to Target. So this would really make a difference because our companies like Walmart and Target and that, they're taking a killing here with shoplifting, because people know when they go up there, if they get caught, it's just, we know all you can do is give us a ticket, and, and they're really, um, that's about it. Uh, it requires the state parole board to consider inmates' entire criminal history rather than just their most recent offense, and holds hearings on whether to revoke parole for someone who violates their parole for the third time. So this is what this will actually do. I truly believe that this is gonna reduce crime if we can get these back. It's definitely a safety issue, and that for us is the number one concern on this council. So if you see, um, uh, someone doing signatures, it's your call, but this is what we're trying to get on there uh, in regards to, um, you know, getting in front of the, uh, the voters come November. Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we give Councilman Minigar a chance now?
All right. Well, I start with the big one, and, uh, the good news for our city that, uh, the election of the South County coastal cities is complete, and the cities of Laguna Beach, Dana Point, San Juan, Capistrano, San Clemente, Aliso Viejo, and obviously Laguna Niguel. I happen to be the winner, so, um, for the Orange County Council of Governments have been elected for the next two years to represent all these cities, thirty, um, elected officials. It would translate into that automatically then, I'm the representative of all the South Orange County's coastal cities for SCAG for the upcoming two years, depending on the election this year. So having said that, um, we are secure, we're gonna have, um, one voice for one sub-region. And, and as everybody knows me, when I attend all those OCOG meetings at the city hall of City of Irvine on a monthly basis, I advocate for our sub-region, what's good for our beautiful city in conjunction with our beautiful neighboring cities. So that's one, and the two would be on a regional basis with one hundred and ninety-one cities being present uh, for the SCAGs meeting, then I'll be doing the same. With that said, um, it was an honor myself, and I believe it, with Mayor Pro Tem Jennings attending the ACCOC's city leaders reception at Angel Stadium's Diamond Bar, I mean Diamond Club last week. It was a great occasion to get to chat with our colleagues from all other cities, thirty-four cities in Orange County. Um, and then on Friday, for, February twenty-third, I attended the National Orange County Government Leaders' Prayers Breakfast in Irvine. Then the same evening, I attended Orange County Fire Authority's Best and Bravest Tenth Annual Awards Ceremony in Laguna Hills. And then with my colleagues, not to take the thunder from you, we attended the, uh, the opening day of Laguna Niguel Little League's, um, games at Chaparosa Park. On Thursday, March the first, I was in downtown LA attending SCAGs Transportation Committee Meeting, as well as the Regional Council, uh, the whole day. Um, and then on Friday, March the second, along with my colleagues, I attended Laguna Niguel Chambers Governmental Affairs, that we had our, um, fifth district representative, Lisa Bartlett, talking about the issues of importance to us, to our city and our residents. And along with my colleagues, we came back, I guess I, we, three of us came back this morning, and I don't want to take the thunder from you, and our mayor Pro Tem came back yesterday afternoon. It was a good meeting to get to chat, you know, exchange ideas with other elected officials, you know, from Orange County. With that, I stopped there.
That wasn't too bad, was it?
I skipped a few.
My turn?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Great, thank you, mayor. Uh, we did indeed just get back from Sacramento. I came back yesterday evening, and the rest came back this afternoon, this morning sometime, so, uh, it was, uh, very productive. Uh, one of the things, I don't know if citizens know that we do or not, but we do spend quite a bit of time engaging our regional representatives and our state representatives on issues that we talk about here locally. And lo and behold, almost every city in California has the same issue or a, and a version of the same issue. Uh, and those need to be translated up the chain to people who can do something about it. I was struck by the, the collection of people that we met with are generally people that I would vehemently disagree with on a policy level, uh, and some of the things that they are putting forward, I definitely disagree with. Having said that, it, it was a very productive meeting because, uh, they, you know, as part of our lobbying efforts, one of the things they got to do was hear the other side of that, and while they, I'm sure they have considered that, they got to hear the practical applications of what that means to our cities when, uh, they do these things that seem like good ideas for downtown Sacramento, or downtown San Francisco, or downtown LA. Those don't always translate into a very good idea for, uh, Orange County cities. So having said that, it was, it was a great meeting, and it was well-attended by, uh, I think there were forty or fifty people there from elected officials, uh, regionally from South Orange County. And I appreciate the ACCOC, I do know what that stands for, uh, the ACCOC for putting that together and, uh, for doing a very good job. Uh, secondly, I wanted to, uh, compliment the mayor, uh, on, uh, what I think is the, we're calling the First Annual City Leaders, uh, Meeting. It was a group of, uh, you know, we have sort of the, the chamber that represents the business, but then we have everyone else. We have our, uh, our school-based organizations, our service groups, our faith-based entities, uh, and others who are civic leaders who are spending a tremendous amount of time volunteering and doing unbelievable things in our community, and the mayor was, uh, had the forethought to bring them together. We met in the city, uh, room across the hall, had roughly fifty people there, and I'll let her talk about some of the things that came out of that, but it was a very, very good meeting. I thought it was very, not only well-attended, it was very well-received, and I got, could follow up on that. One of the things we'll be producing is a Volunteers' Opportunity List, so people know where all of these meetings are, and they can collectively see that. I think the city has a, uh, I think we're duty-bound to help promote these things and push that out to, uh, the rest of the residents, and I think it's a cooperative thing. Some of the things we talked about, uh, this week are, uh, hitting home locally. We, we spent time talking about sober living homes and what we can do to try to limit those, dare I say, eliminate those where we can, uh, but at least regulate them in a way that, uh, puts them back into the box in which they belong, where if there are good operators who are doing the right thing and inside the law, that they can do that in a way that, uh, works with their neighbors and those who are outside of the law, we have the ability to enforce that. And that was really sort of the subject of that. Uh, also, uh, we have a tremendous housing problem in California. Orange County shares a portion of that housing problem. I was very interested to watch how quickly the legislators move from the word housing to the word homeless, which I don't necessarily quote those two things together. We do have a homeless issue which, uh, definitely needs to be addressed. But the number of homeless, uh, in that entire issue pales in comparison to the housing problem that we also have, uh, which is not necessarily just low-income housing. That's not what that word means. It means affordable housing. So in California, that may be a five or six hundred thousand, uh, dollar home. Uh, but, you know, where somewhere else, that would be a palace. Here, that could easily be an entry-level dwelling. Uh, it's far below the median price here in Laguna Niguel for sure. So they're, they're trying to address, um, incentives to get that type of housing. Housing where, uh, the vast much people that support our infrastructure, that, that are working folks, have a place that they can get into that. And what they're really telling us is that our, our kids and our recent college graduates and our future, uh, moms and dads who will be having kids that fill our schools and things like that, we have to think about that long-term, and I like the idea that that's, uh, that's a discussion that's, uh, coming up a lot. Uh, the last one I want to talk about is we had, um, several discussions, and it was brought up, uh, when Supervisor Bartlett spoke with us on Friday, uh, is this issue of airplane noise and what we're doing about it. The city has been incredibly actively involved in monitoring, uh, the next-gen flights, uh, over our city. Uh, we've been monitoring the litigation between the county, uh, Laguna Beach and the FAA. And I'm very mindful of that, and I appreciate the efforts of the city manager, because she's been very, uh, helpful to me in responding to a lot of the citizens' inquiries and complaints and other things that we're receiving as a council day after day. And I just want to ensure the public that we are on top of this. And to the extent that we find something that is aberrant to the city, that isn't good for us somehow, we will act. And right now, we are trying to be mindful of saving your resources, and just because we don't put our name on a piece of litigation does not mean that we are not actively involved in that litigation and monitoring and looking at it and finding out how it benefits us. And to the extent that there's anything that we need to do, I promise you that we're doing that. So that's one of those issues that's, uh, I've seen a lot of, uh, uh, media about it, and a lot of people asking questions about it. I want to make sure that they, uh, that they know they did that. And I just want to end on a more positive note that, uh, if you want to get. And I just want to end on a more positive note, that if you want to get a good sense of Laguna Niguel and the future of America, I invite you to go to an opening day of Little League. It was organized chaos with more smiles and anticipation, and everybody went into the day undefeated, and it looked like it was gonna be a good week. So, I did, I threw, I did. I, I, I wanted to say that it was a, it was a, you know, it was a fastball that hit the inside corner, so I think it's okay. But anybody who was there that has a video of that, I'll deny it.
Well, I think Councilmember Minigar and I will agree with that, whatever your evaluation of that is. Great first pitch for the season. So, and, and thanks to Laguna Niguel Little League for inviting us. That was a fun day. So, many of the things I've done have already been stated, but just to let you know, since our last meeting, I've met with Representative of the Laguna Niguel Historical Society, Nancy Kurtz. I've met with members of the Laguna Niguel Community Theater to talk about their community outreach. I've met with Mara James of the Extraordinary Lives Foundation, which helps families address the challenges of mental health issues, and talked about the High Five Carnival coming up in April. And as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, we had an incredible meeting on Friday, February 23rd, right across the hall in the community room. It was the Meet the Mayor Leadership Breakfast, and all of the, the presidents and a board member of the many different organizations that serve our community were invited. And I thank you so much to Interim Assistant City Manager Belle for all of your assistance, and also to Megan Sterling for her assistance on helping organize that and making it such a successful event. And many of our, you know, it, it takes many people and many leaders within our community for our city to be as great as it is, and for the experience for our residents to be as great as it is. And they were amazed that this is the first time they had been invited to come together. And actually, Ms. Belle called me afterwards, the volunteer broker, because what we found at the meeting is there were a number of organizations who wanted to serve certain groups, but didn't have the applicants. And then there were other organizations that had those groups. And a perfect example are, we have a number of organizations in our city that want to provide scholarships for students or, or different opportunities for them, but they have a hard time getting to the students. And then we have the school groups saying, "Well, wait a minute, we have all the students." So, we're, we're providing opportunities for them to connect. And ways that we are doing that is, we are updating our city website, and on that will be a volunteer opportunities list where the different organizations can provide some contact information and what they do. And then also, a community calendar, because we found out, as everyone went around the room, I guess this year, May 18th is a very popular day for fundraisers. So, just, it will be separate from the city calendar, but so when an organization, one of our nonprofits, is planning something, they can see, "Oh, well, you know, this group is having something, and we want to invite them, so we may need to look at another date." But to provide that information, you know, information is what makes all of these groups successful. So, I appreciate all of them coming out early in the morning at 7:30 to meet each other. And I think it was a success, successful event, and thank you for being there, Mayor Pro Tem. On Monday morning, the 26th, I attended, I was part of a press conference that was organized by Mayor Ed Sacks of Mission Viejo. And it is a collaboration of the five mayors of our South Orange County cities, and to talk about how to keep our children safe. And it's Secure OC Schools. And our children are very, they're very stressed right now. There, there's been a lot going on in both our immediate community and our national community regarding teen suicides and school shootings. And I know I've talked to our Lieutenant Matt McDaniel about the school sites and work is being done on our police services, and we're very appreciative of that, and we know we will be hearing more about that. But this is an issue that needs to be addressed in many ways. And, you know, the school sites, what can we do as a city? What are the schools doing? And how do we support our parents and what they're doing? So, we had a press conference on the morning of the 26th. And then later that day in the evening, Donna Gugliotta, Licensed Marriage and Family Therapist, hosted an evening for parents to talk about their children's safety, how to talk to your children, how to talk to teens about this, how do you talk to your kids about teen suicide and school shootings? That's a very hard topic to approach, and it needs to be done in a very sensitive manner. And there was a lot of talk about connecting with your children, and also, and I'm a proponent of not just your children, but other children. Talk to, you know, other children because they may not be having the interaction that we're assuming they're having with the adults in their home. And our kids need to know that they're cared about, they need to know that there's someone for them to talk to, and it, it's okay to talk to it. And we want them, we encourage that, because if they keep it all bottled up, they're just gonna, the, the stress is going to be too much for them. So, talk to your kids also. And we had our meeting, after, before our last council meeting, we met with our youth committee, which are the high school students that are appointed by the city council. And Councilmember Lindholm had asked them about the Text2Tip. And that's a program that we had assumed was being, that we assumed it was being, it was that it was very robust in the schools, and we found out differently. So, I know Councilmember Lindholm and I have talked to our police chief, Matt McDaniel, about that. And he's agreed that he will, at the next council meeting, can you please bring us some information on Text2Tip and what's being done, and provide information to our community? Because I know they'd like to hear about that. But we appreciate your, you're willing to bring, to kind of revitalize that for our kids, because that's very important. But just reach out to the kids. Let them feel safe. And then, let's see, we talked about the Sacramento trip. The big items that were talked about were pension, housing, transportation is a big issue, and then also taxes and homeless. But I think pension and transportation and housing were the three top items. And we met with not only legislators, senators, assembly members, but also some secretaries of different departments. So, they were very good at meetings that we had. And this Friday is the deadline for Word of the Month, which is optimism. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing the artwork that's been inspired by optimism for March. And then after you drop off your piece of artwork at City Hall, go over to Sea Country because that's the opening ceremonies for our senior games. And next Tuesday, our junior civic workshop speaker will be Judge Matt Anderson. And he talks to the kids about Drug Court. A very impactful presentation. This will be his third year back for us, so we're so appreciative of him taking his time, but it's very impactful for the teens. So, this is for middle school students. Sign up at EllenTeens.org. And then in the, during spring break, which is less than a month from now, it'll be here soon, the spray ground at Crown Valley Park will be open to the delight of all of our kids and their parents and their grandparents. And at that, the spray ground, on the Thursday night, April 5th, from 4:30 to 6:30, we'll be having a Meet the Mayor at the spray ground. So, I'll be there, and whatever council members are able to attend will be there, and look forward to talking to you about, showing you what's going on at Crown Valley Park. And then also, if I could please ask our city manager, Ridge, for the next city council meeting, if we could please have, there's two items that should be brought to the council, and one is the delegation, delegation of facility fee waiver policy, if we could have that. And then also, and we had talked about this before, the resolution to have the city council close session meeting prior to the start of the regular city council meeting. So, if we could have those at our next meeting, and then along with Lieutenant McDaniel's presentation. Okay? And I think that's all that I have. So, let's go on to department reports. And would, would you like to start this time, Nasser?
Yes, thank you. I will pass. Thanks.
Okay. Wait a minute. Councilman Minigar, you see how quick? No, we love you. We appreciate all your information.
I'm sorry I'll be a bad example. I just wanted to recognize and reintroduce and introduce Francisco Barajas from Communications Lab, who is visiting us this evening. I know some of the council members have not met Francisco. He's very good at what he does. He's especially good at social media, which is amazing. And the other thing I wanted to let the council members know, because I know you travel about in the community and you hear from different people, at the request of the mayor, we sent a mailing out to all of the faith-based communities in Laguna Niguel and in our, some of our surrounding cities. And we included in the mailing a pamphlet that's on our website that was put together by the youth committee that talks about teen resources and volunteer opportunities. So, if you hear somebody say, "Oh, I got some pamphlets from the city," you'll know what it is. If you haven't seen this pamphlet, or you'd like me to send it to you, just let me know. I'm happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Giglio.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the inaugural Laguna Niguel Senior Games is this weekend. The opening ceremonies is 4:00 to 6:00 at Sea Country Senior Center on Friday. And the closing ceremony is gonna be on Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00 as well. And we're gonna be posting a schedule of all the events tomorrow on the city website. So, you can see specifically where to go, who to watch, and what to bring, so that you can sit comfortably. And also, the MLB Pitch Hit and Run Baseball and Softball Skills Competition is on Sunday, March 18th, from 12:00 to 2:00 at Chaparosa Park. Participants ages 7 to 14 need to provide a birth certificate for the onsite registration. And top scorers will advance to a sectional competition. And the national finals are gonna take place at the MLB All-Star Week in Washington, D.C. So, encourage everyone to sign up for that free event. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez. Okay, Mr. Masbooty.
Nothing in trouble tonight, ma'am.
Director Roseberry.
Nothing this evening.
Hey, and I'd like to welcome Battalion Chief George Casario. He's sitting in for Fire Chief Adams. Do you have any news for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Good evening. The Orange County Fire Authority is in the last stages of our fire chief recruitment. We believe there a candidate is in backgrounds and negotiations with our board of directors, and we look forward to the appointment being announced on March 15th at our board of directors meeting. That is all.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Dixon.
Oh, nothing tonight.
Director Erlenson. Chief McDaniel.
Just a reminder, St. Patrick's Day is coming up rather fast here. But it falls on a Saturday night this year, so I'm sure there's gonna be many a party out there. I just would encourage our residents to make their transportation plans now. Our guys will be out in force that night, but I would rather you not meet them that night. So, that's all I have.
Me too. Okay. City Manager Ridge. Okay. Okay, I'd like to close tonight's city council meeting in memory of Nancy Palmer, former Environmental Programs Manager, City Landscape Architect, who recently retired from the city of Laguna Niguel after 19 years of dedicated service. During her time with the city, Nancy was closely involved with the design of many parks and public spaces around Southern California, including the remodel of John Wayne Airport and the development of the Niguel Botanical Preserve. She also had a key role in the city receiving local and statewide recognition for leadership in implementing innovative and effective urban runoff management projects, and was instrumental in the city receiving over $13 million in regional and state grants, and received awards for her, for many of these projects from the American Society of Civil Engineers and the American Public Works Association. Nancy was also one who designed the planting, the landscaping in the medians down Crown Valley Parkway. So, I know whenever I'm driving Crown Valley and I see those pretty flowers in the medians, I think of her. So, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, we extend our deepest sympathy to Nancy's family. And we are now adjourned at 9:00 PM. Thank you, and have a nice evening.